Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the St. Charles County Council meeting tonight. We will begin our meeting with an invocation from Pastor Steve Parks from the Bible Baptist Church in St. Charles, and then Councilman John White will lead in our Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would please stand, remove your hats.
Shall we pray? Father, we come to you this evening, and we are acknowledging our dependence upon you. We are thankful for your goodness to us. We know that every good and perfect gift comes from you. We thank you, Father, for the quality of life that you give us in our community. We acknowledge that all true wisdom comes from you. We pray, Father, for the members of the council that you'll give them wisdom as they gather the facts, they grasp those that are pertinent. Father, give them wisdom to make right decisions. We pray for them as your word commands us to pray for those in government, that we might live quiet and peaceable lives. We thank you, Father, for their concern for this county and for its residents. Pray again that you'll just grant them the wisdom that they need this evening, and we'll give you the praise and honor. We ask it in Christ's name and for his sake. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge to consider the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Harold, if you'd call the roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin. Councilmember Joe Brazel. Councilmember Dave Hammond. Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
Excellent. Do we have any public presentations tonight? I don't, I'm not aware of any.
We do not.
Excellent. So we'll open it up to public comments. We ask all those who would like to speak to fill out a speaker's card. If you haven't done so already, I should have reminded you that before I sat down, so thank you. Generally, if you're going to speak, we'd ask you to fill out a speaker's card, turn that into the ladies, and they will call it out. So who's our first speaker for the evening?
We have Celeste Reeder. Good evening, members of the council and county Executive Ailment. My name is Celeste Reeder. I am the Executive Vice President at the Home Builders Association of St. Louis in Eastern Missouri, and I'm here this evening on behalf of our members. You have a bill that will be introduced later on your agenda, 4439, regarding building codes, and our members, of course, are interested in the International Residential Code. And as was mentioned in a letter that I submitted on Friday, our association is supportive of the bill as it will be presented to you this evening. And really, I just wanted to say a public thank you to all those at the county that were involved in the development of this ordinance. Our members and our staff had an opportunity to work with Mr. Agee in various settings, in meetings, emails, and calls. There was a lot of communication, and we really appreciated that. A special thank you also to Councilman Hammond and his role on the Building Commission. I know he's not here this evening, but we want to thank him as well, and all the Building Commissioners. That was another excellent meeting. And also, the County Executive's Office for their input at the very outset of this process. Typically, my staff person, that was a point person, Emily Schwartz Post, would be here this evening instead of me, but she and her husband welcomed a little boy about 10 days ago, so you know, got me instead. So I'll be around. If you do have any questions for us, I'll be happy to try to answer them later.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker.
We have Arnie A.C. Dinoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. Arnie Dinoff, public advocate and resident. My first question to the council is, why do we have lobbyists to the tune of $150,000 plus paying their expenses to represent St. Charles County and Jefferson City when we have 12, 13 state legislators that are elected to represent our county, our 400,000 residents, and two state senators? I think it's a total waste of money. I think it's redundant, and I think it's a shame that we have staff members, an Assistant Director of Administration, and a Chief of Staff that also work on legislation in Jefferson City. It just doesn't make any sense. My question is, what does the county executive do for his $142,000 salary benefits and his brand-new Ford Explorer? Also on your agenda, under the consent agenda, is a construction management proposed agreement with Brinkman in the amount of $19,595,319,000. First of all, Brinkman is not located in St. Charles County. It's located in St. Louis County, Aurora, Colorado, and Overland Park, Kansas. We hired, just on the last couple of years, project managers. What do these people do that we're paying them to the tune of $100,000 plus benefits? What do these project managers do? They're supposed to be managing these type of scenarios and projects. And again, how are we going to pay for the $20 million to make our emergency management operations center? I haven't heard any discussion or debate of the legislative elected officials, and I think you need to be cognizant and transparent in the process. Brinkman did not show up on the original formal bid request. Cordy Company in the amount of $19,668,000 was the first, and S.M. Wilson in the amount of $22,737,000, but Brinkman did not show up in this original list. Somebody added Brinkman at the last minute to appease somebody's political appointment. Also on your consent agenda is the appointment of Greg Dorman. Greg Dorman has a clear conflict of interest. It's unethical, dishonest, to allow an associate deputy county counselor who works for St. Charles County also be on the board of the Duckett Creek Board of Trustees. It's dishonest governmental operations at its best, and my question is, is Mr. Dorman a user and a fee user of the system? We also have Bob Schnar, who's Director of Finance, Director of Family Arena, and Acting County Register, who sits on that board of trustees at Duckett Creek. It just seems like the county executive is stacking it with a bunch of yes-men and the taxpayers, heck with them, especially when the Director of Administration got a huge bump in salary to the tune of $165,000 plus a public vehicle, plus a pension and benefits. It's a hidden governmental entity, and I think it needs to come to a stop.
Thank you, Mr. Dinoff. Your time is expired.
Thank you.
Our next speaker?
That's it.
That's two weeks, two meetings in a row. We've only had a couple of speakers, so we're rolling right along. Or a report from the county executive.
Mr. Chairman, I have no report, but I would like to, everyone, to notice we're blessed by the presence of a former senator and now director of the Duckett Creek Sewer District, who is here, I think, because he has one of his appointees on the agenda and was going to answer any questions you might have about her, but actually, I think he just came by to say hi, so, welcome.
It's always good to see you. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to items for final passage with Bill 4422.
Bill number 4422, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R-1B PUD FFFW, Single Family Residential District, with planned unit development floodway fringe and floodway overlay district, to AFFFW, Agricultural District, with floodway fringe and floodway overlay districts, as per application RZ 16-16.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none?
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R-1B PUD FFFW, Single Family Residential District, with planned unit development floodway fringe and floodway overlay districts, to AFFFW, Agricultural District, with floodway fringe and floodway overlay districts, as per application RZ 16-16. Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Move on to Bill 4423 after 4422 passes.
Bill number 4423, an ordinance granting conditional use permits CUP 16-10 for preschool to Brandon R. Cops and Jack 1K Cops property owners.
Questions or comments? Seeing none?
An ordinance granting conditional use permits CUP 16-10 for preschool to Brandon R. Cops and Jack 1K Cops property owners. Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Bill 4423 passes. Move on to Bill 4424.
Bill number 4424, an ordinance amending ordinance 16-095, establishing the Saratoga Heights Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District and ordering the preparation of plans and specifications.
Questions or comments on 4424? Seeing none?
An ordinance amending ordinance 16-95, establishing the Saratoga Heights Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District and ordering the preparation of plans and specifications. Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Bill 4424 passes. On to Bill 4425.
Bill number 4425, an ordinance amending sections 405.060, 405.215, 405.220, 405.223, and 405.510, and enacting a new section 405.523 of the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 405, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri.
Any questions or comments?
I got some questions.
Yes, sir.
Is this you, Mike? Is this your? On some of the things that we talked about, you can come up here if you want to. I don't know if the mayoral has any questions, but on some of the things we've been talking about recently with escrows and stuff like that, is that in this? This bill's lengthy. Is that concerning any of those things? And some of the things we're talking about tonight, are those things that we need to address while we're addressing this bill?
No, escrows are not covered as part of this.
But are some of the other issues, are those just processes that we're talking?
This is just process, yeah. Those are just processes. This is the continuation of the review, site plan review for CUP, conditional use permits.
Okay, and fees and stuff aren't in here as well? Or are they?
It would be different chapters.
Yeah, that's.
Chapter 405, all the issues in the top of our standard 410.
Okay, okay.
Joe, if I could, this one has more to do with what kind of, that they have to submit a drawing along with their preliminary plan.
Correct. It's laying out the specific requirements so that the applicant understands what they need to submit.
Okay, well, that's good. Okay, yeah, that sounds good. I was just curious.
Sure.
Any further questions? Seeing none? Thanks, Mike.
An ordinance amending sections 405.060, 405.215, 405.220, 405.223, and 405.510, and enacting a new section 405.523 of the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 405, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri. Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Bill number 4425 passes. Move on to Bill 4426.
Bill number 4426, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement amending the contract authorized by ordinance 08-154, 09-072, and 14-022 with the St. Charles County Soil and Water Conservation District for the purpose of providing certain services to the county.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none?
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement amending the contract authorized by ordinance 08-154, 09-072, and 14-022 with the St. Charles County Soil and Water Conservation District for the purpose of providing certain services to the county. Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Bill number 4426 passes. On to Bill 4427.
Bill number 4427, an ordinance relating to housing and community assistance, and one, approving the 2017 Annual Action Plan for St. Charles County, Missouri, in its capacity as an urban county for fiscal year 2017 through 2019, under the Community Development Block Grant Program of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizing the county executive to execute all documents or certifications required for submittal to HUD with the action plan, and two, further authorizing the county executive to execute the funding approval agreements that HUD shall require upon approving the 2017 Annual Action Plan.
Any questions or comments on 4427? Seeing none?
An ordinance relating to housing and community assistance, and one, approving the 2017 Annual Action Plan for St. Charles County, Missouri, in its capacity as an urban county for fiscal year 2017 through 2019, under the Community Development Block Grant Program of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizing the county executive to execute all documents or certifications required for submittal to HUD with the action plan, and two, further authorizing the county executive to execute the funding approval agreements that HUD shall require upon approving the 2017 Annual Action Plan. Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Bill number 4427 passes. On to Bill 4428.
Bill number 4428, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreement with the University of Missouri Extension Council of St. Charles County to provide educational programs and services at a cost to the county of $100,000.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none?
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreement with the University of Missouri Extension Council of St. Charles County to provide educational programs and services at a cost to the county of $100,000. Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Bill 4428 passes. On to Bill 4429.
Bill number 4429, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a professional services agreement between St. Charles County, Missouri, and the United States Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Missouri, in conjunction with the Missouri Highway Patrol as fiscal agent and Sarah Copenal as an independent contractor, and further amending ordinance 16-110 to add one additional month to the term of the professional services agreement of ANGE Danus.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none?
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a professional services agreement between St. Charles County, Missouri, and the United States Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Missouri, in conjunction with the Missouri Highway Patrol as fiscal agent, and Sarah Copenal as an independent contractor, and further amending ordinance 16-110 to add one additional month to the term of the professional services agreement of ANGE Danus. Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Bill 4429 passes. On to Bill 4430.
Bill number 4430, an ordinance amending section 115.705.8.15 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, concerning the overtime provisions of the Personnel Administration Plan.
Questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none?
An ordinance amending section 115.705.8.15 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, concerning the overtime provisions of the Personnel Administration Plan. Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
That concludes bills for final passage. We'll move on to bills for introduction, starting with Bill 4431.
Bill number 4431, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by councils as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of O'Fallon for allocation of funds for work associated with the construction of Bramblett Road.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none?
Bill number 4432, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by councils as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Lake St. Louis for allocation of funds for work associated with the construction of Orf Road.
Any questions or comments on 4432? Seeing none?
Bill number 4433, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by councils as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a CMAQ program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Gateway Green Light Program Phase IV, Federal Project CMAQ-5414632.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none?
Bill number 4434, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by councils as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a CMAQ program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Gateway Green Light Program Phase V, Federal Project CMAQ-5414633.
Any questions or comments on 4434? Seeing none?
Bill number 4435, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by councils as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a termination agreement between St. Charles County and the City of St. Charles, terminating a contract for use of St. Charles County Transportation Sales Tax Funds for reconstruction of Harry S. Truman Boulevard.
Any questions or comments on 4435?
So I want to make sure everybody knows that they're not really terminating the project that is delayed by a year, and it's back in for the next cycle.
Very well.
But Truman Road's still getting done. Just pushed it back.
Okay. On to the next bill.
Bill number 4436, requested by Belinda Lewis, sponsored by councils as a whole, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget adopted by ordinance 16-104 and the Personnel Administration Plan adopted by ordinance 16-105.
Questions or comments on 4436? Seeing none?
Bill number 4437, requested by Mike Klinghammer, sponsored by Mike Klinghammer, an ordinance amending ordinance number 16-100, requiring that, with certain designated exceptions, bills which have been substantially amended after introduction and prior to final passage be placed on the next duly scheduled council meeting agenda.
Any questions or comments about this one? Seeing none?
Bill number 4438, requested by Michael Herbert, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, an ordinance authorizing execution of two agreements relating to St. Charles County's urban county community development block grant program, or urban county CDBG program, for 2014 through 2016, namely, a subrecipient agreement between St. Charles County and the City of St. Peters to operate and run the city's CDBG programs and services, and a service agreement between St. Charles County and the City of St. Peters for the city's operation of urban county programs and services.
Any questions or comments on 4438? Seeing none?
Bill number 4439, requested by Michael Herbert, sponsored by Dave Hammond, an ordinance amending Chapter 500, Building Codes and County Building Commission, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, by adopting the amendments, the 2015 International Building Code, the 2015 International Residential Code for one and two-family dwellings, 2015 International Existing Building Code, 2015 International Mechanical Code, 2015 International Fuel Gas Code, 2014 National Fire Protection Association 70 National Electric Code, 2015 International Plumbing Code, 2015 International Private Sewage Disposal Code, 2015 International Energy Conservation Code, 2015 International Fire Code, 2015 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, respectively.
That's a lot.
It is.
Any questions or comments on 4439?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this, Mike, what, Mike, what kind of burdens is this going to create on homeowners, and what kind of cost is it going to increase on the homes? That's a big question.
There's just going to be very little.
Jared, if you would, come on up so we can hear you. This is your first time. You've got to stand up and do this. I want to make sure everybody gets to see who you are. You've done some great work here.
There's very little change to homeowners. We worked and we tried to get energy up to the 2009 levels, which we were very close already. We don't anticipate there being much cost to homeowners.
Now, are you requiring, on page 35, R309.5, are you requiring fire sprinklers in garages?
Only if the homeowner chooses to install sprinklers in their house. So if the homeowner chooses to have sprinklers in their house, then we would require them in the garage as well.
Does it say that? I mean, I'm reading it, and I'm trying to understand it. I mean, it says, "Private garages shall be protected by fire sprinklers," where the garage wall has been designed. I don't know what table R302 is, but it says, "shall have." That's why I don't see the exception. That's why I'm...
If you go to the next page, on page 36, and the homeowner has opted to purchase a fire sprinkler system for the residence in accordance with RSMO 67281.
So if he chooses to have a...
Correct.
Okay.
The state requires that all builders offer sprinklers as an option, but they're not mandatory. It's mandatory that they provide them as an option. So if you require them in the house, they need to be in the attached garage as well.
So is the, is there, for a home builder, independent builder, or whomever, is it going to, do you have any ideas that change the typical construction significantly, or very minor, or...
Very minor.
Mostly safety, or what is it?
There's a few safety changes. We could ask Celeste if she has, do you have an estimate on what this proposal would change?
Dollar-wise, I do not have a comparison of what we have currently, 2019, what this bill is.
Because, I mean, the cost just gets, just gets pushed to the consumer, so I'd like to know what, I know that's a big question. I'm not saying you to pinpoint, like, if it's a $200,000 in our house, how much more is it going to cost? $10,000, $5,000? Or do you, I mean, did we change anything that significantly where it's going to really drive up cost?
It's my understanding it's around $5,000. I don't know that for sure, but that's...
Jared, could you highlight just the major, most...
To be honest with you, I can't think of anything that's a major change for residential builders over what they're doing now. I mean, there's some framing techniques that have to change a little bit for safety. There is drywalling the ceiling and the basement, which is something that the HBA had worked out with the firefighters' union, which is a safety issue for iJoyce.
They have to drywall the ceiling now?
Yeah.
And the whole basement?
Just if they use iJoyce.
You mean the...
The engineered lumber.
Sweet freak, yeah.
If they use your typical nominal lumber, they don't. But what was happening is the building would catch on fire, and by the time the firefighters responded, there wasn't enough time with fire protecting the basement floor. So firefighters were reportedly going in, and the floor was collapsing when they were going in to do search and rescue.
So, but that, you're talking about, is it 5X? Is it 5/8X? Is that what you're requiring?
Yes.
So that right there, that's a huge expense. That's more, you're talking about more than $5,000 on, if you're, if that's one thing, is there, what other kind of...
There's options. Like, they don't have to use iJoyce. They could use nominal lumber. They could put a sprinkler system in. There's a lot of different options that they have. They don't necessarily have to use iJoyce.
But most of the builders do use iJoyce now. They don't use the common two-by-tens.
I would say probably 25% of the homes that I go into use iJoyce. I don't see them too often.
Just the bigger ones use the iJoyce because they have longer spans that they can accomplish. The smaller houses still use the nominal lumber because of the spans.
On the, on the walls, you're stepping that up. I mean, I'm not saying it's not required, but you got 10 inches and 12 inches. Is that, what kind of cost is your, if you're talking about 2 inches or 4 inches more on a wall all the way around? Where'd you get that information from? Did the concrete institute make that requirement, or did you, who came up with that?
That was proposed by the Home Builders Association. That is the standard construction practice in the area, what they've been doing in the past. So there's no change there. It is changing from what the published code said, but we're trying to follow on the Building Commission's recommendation, the standard accomplished in the area.
But I mean, okay, so back to the... And I'm not trying... But I mean, how many firefighters have we had die fall through the floor in St. Charles County when the house caught on fire because it didn't have fire-protected drywall on the ceiling?
I don't know.
And how many foundations do we got falling in because they're not 2 or 4 inches thicker?
I don't know of any that have failed.
I mean, I'm just saying that, you know, a lot of people set around and make all these rules and stuff, and all it does is drive up the cost for the consumers. That's all it does. And I don't know. I'm... We better look at these things. I'm telling you guys.
Well, I could tell you, Councilman Hammond has been intimately involved in all of these discussions from the get-go, and he's signed off on all these. He's given his blessing to this bill, and he is on board. So I understand where you're coming from, but he's got 30-plus years' experience in the industry, so I defer to him on this one.
Well, I did call him, and he was going out of town, but he did want to kind of talk, look at this a little bit more. But I mean, I can't speak for him, so...
Oh, he told me at the end of the last meeting he was good with this, unless you have something different. We'll follow up with him between now and the next meeting and find out for sure. Any other questions or comments?
One more thing.
Sorry.
Does this... This doesn't have the fees in it, Mike. Does this have the fees in it, or just the codes? Okay.
Chief?
We know of one firefighter that's been falling through a floor.
Anything else, Mr. Brazel?
No.
Thank you, Jared. Appreciate it. Thanks for all the hard work that you guys have put into this. I know there's been a lot of hours and a lot of cooperation with the home builders and others that have gone into this, so thank you very much. We have no table bills. Any announcements are miscellaneous? I have a couple that I'd like to pass on. So was it Thursday, Donna, when we recognized the employees?
Yes.
So we had 11 employees who were honored on Thursday at the administration building with 25-plus years of service to the county. Jana Walters with the Sheriff's Department, Eric Bishop with Corrections, Mary Minert, and I'm sorry if I say anybody's name wrong. She's with Public Health. Scott Green with Public Health, Bradley Craig with the Police Department, Michael Coyne with the Police Department. Sorry, these are 30. Mary, Scott, Brad, Michael, Gary Morris with the Assessor, Amy Ensley with the Assessor. Those were 30 years. And 35 years, Keith Copeland with Police, James Shute with the Highway Department, and David Buck from the Assessor's Department, 35 years with the county. I thought we should recognize them for their service, and I appreciate everything that they do. Speaking of appreciating everything that they do, he's not here tonight, but Jack Gamble is leaving us after 13 years of service. Jack has served us very faithfully, and especially making sure that we make it on the air. His department put together the fun little intros and outros that we have for our broadcast, and I appreciate any of you that are watching the broadcast. So thank you to both of you who are watching this right now. Just kidding. So Jack is retiring with us. He is doing yeoman's work over at the Family Arena, has for a long time. He's brought these video cameras in here. He's put together the big-screen TV up here. He's put together the new podium, so I appreciate all of that. So Jack, wherever you are tonight, we wish you the best. We thank you for all your years of service, and we wish you the very best in retirement. So Jack, thanks for all you've done. All right, with all that being said, I would entertain a motion to dismiss.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are dismissed.